Ready? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Spokane County Planning Commission. Today is Thursday, July the 11th. It is nine AM. The public may participate in person or remotely by utilizing our web link and telephone conference link star nine to raise hand star six to speak. Individuals are limited to one three minute comment period for any item. Please keep your comments specific to the current agenda item. Chat is not supported. We have a very simple agenda today. Let's start by introducing ourselves. Logan, we'll start with you.
Morning, y'all. Good morning, y'all. Logan Kemp, Oriole.
Thank you. Lonnie Edwards.
Melissa Whitstruck.
Wayne Brokaw.
Pete Rayner, Stephen Poll. Next order is open forum. This is the part where the public is invited to speak and address the commission for any item that is not N O T on this current agenda. Now it's the time to come forward and take the mic. And that could be someone in the audience or someone who's online. Do we have any raised hands? We have quite a few people on on the line, it looks like. No raised hands? Nothing in the audience? Seeing none? Let's move on. Next order of business is a workshop, two thousand twenty six Conference of Plan Charette. Scott, I'll let you describe what a charette is. It's an architectural term. Planning staff will conduct a charette on population and housing allocations to Spokane County places and the land use impacts on the Spokane County urban growth area boundary. Mr. Chesney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have several exhibits for you today. But chiefly today, we're going to take the time to talk about what does visioning look like? What does scenario building look like? And how is that going to be guiding our comprehensive plan efforts? In addition to our responsibilities under the Growth Management Act to complete very specific elements of that plan. We're going to start though with at least a brief discussion of housing. Our staff and chiefly, you know, right accompanying me here, Bongo and Tate have been working on the housing allocation. There's a whole new thing from the legislature in the Growth Management Act. In in prior goals for G M A, it was directed to places doing planning to be to provide affordable housing with as kind of a vague description as that. In this go around, the legislature has changed that, and we have to be able to provide development regulations that allow for housing to be built to serve income levels at some very specific income targets for the county, starting at at very low income, zero to thirty percent of the area median income, thirty to fifty percent of that A M I, fifty to eighty, eighty to a hundred, hundred and twenty and above. So each of those brackets has an allocation that will come from through the Steering Committee to each of the communities that plan under the Growth Management Act. Very different approach, never obviously hasn't been done. And there are challenges, as you might imagine. It's because it's not saying the communities must provide actual housing for those brackets. It's saying you must have development regulations that don't prohibit it, that allow for and support housing to be constructed at those levels. There are commerce has provided two opportunities for us to start with allocating those. And we've shared part of this with you before, but they're starting to come into better focus now. It's a it's a housing tool, essentially an algorithm that takes our projected population and our projected housing or projected income levels and breaks them out into these two groups. One based on overall growth and one based on the share of the population that would that would presumably exist in twenty forty six. And so there are some updates being done to this. And you can see here chiefly the new one is kind of reflecting, I don't say the obvious, but taking those those extremely low income, low income brackets out of being allocated in rural areas. As you might imagine, these are housing users that are because they're at very low income, they're not likely to have automobile transportation. They'd like to be near transit. They'd like to be near services. So allocating them into a rural area is really not a very responsible position. In addition, our staff is looking at these other two opportunities for how we kind of refine this goal. One is, as you might expect, using it on proximity to transit. That's much more difficult for the county than it is for the communities, particularly the the two bigger cities. Because they they have the well established transit routes already running through them. Our unincorporated urban growth areas, for the most part, do not have transit now. So as we alluded to a couple of meetings ago in meeting with S T A, we're we're bringing them into the comprehensive planning tent, so to speak, and trying to align their planning with the comprehensive plan, growth planning, so we can look at where are we going to grow in this twenty year horizon? But how are we going to do it in, say, five year bursts, which will let them better refine their transit planning to much like the concurrency argument we use for the comprehensive plans amendments? Will they be able to provide transit to this area within a five year period? And that horizon gives us confidence than work on some of these housing allocations. And the other is reflecting the demographics of the individual communities so that if if places have higher or lower parts of these lower A M I groups, we would shift part of that to be more reflective of that. You can see here in our due diligence, we've looked around the state to see how other counties are working on this, kind of our peer counties. And and there's there's no easy answer to this, but there, you know, we're all struggling through how to do this for the first time. And so we're we're looking at these various options for moving things forward. And then, you know, again, here the the actual requirements that we've seen. So where we're going, excuse me. The P TAC has been deeply involved in this. There is a subcommittee that was created to work specifically on the population and housing allocations. Our Tate and Bongo are administering that and representing us on these pieces. We will be going to the Steering Committee next week. You're getting a preview of, you know, this this slide deck is is set up for that Steering Committee presentation. That will be on the seventeenth. We are also briefing our Board of County Commissioners on Monday at our quarterly comp plan update session, and we'll be showing some of this information as well. So the calendar is here. We're we're here in July. We're making that draft available through the Steering Committee and then be working through these these workshops as we go. The other part that is happening with this is in addition to that allocation, we are amending our countywide planning policies to reflect the changes of the legislature. When we did the countywide planning policy amendment in twenty twenty one and twenty two, it was to clean up a document that was twenty years old. Yeah, it was it was technologically out of date, and it didn't reflect where we needed to go today. The Steering Committee and the Board agreed at that time to leave the housing chapter alone because we were anticipating these legislative changes. We knew they were in the hopper, so to speak. And so we left that alone. So now we're coming back and specifically focused on the housing countywide planning policies. And we anticipate that process running through the summer. Back to you for comment. And and this is different in the in the past, the these kind of countywide planning, as strange as it seems, a lot of the things that went to the Steering Committee in the past sometimes bypass this planning commission. We are more directly involving you and getting your feedback on these things that will help us relay your perspective to the Steering Committee, which then, of course, makes a recommendation back to the County Board. So that's the first part of where we're starting. So I would pause here and and take some questions at anything you may have on this particular piece.
This is Melissa. I'm not surprised to see some conflicting statements in there, or they appeared to be between softening the language and adding specificity that relates to G M A. So that might be a little bit of a tight rope to walk.
It it has been. Our team has has expressed that same concern. Parts of the subcommittee of the planners in the county are kind of arguing on both sides. You know, with the countywide planning policies are designed to be a foundation for all of us to do planning. So by their nature, they they should be prescriptive. It's just that you shall do these things. But there's a group that is saying we shouldn't be that precise. You should make it more should instead of shall. We're working through that. We'll see kind of whether, I mean, you caught it, obviously. We'll see where the Steering Committee itself falls on that with the electeds, because ultimately they will be responsible for the implementation of these once they're adopted. But yes, we've noticed that tension.
I'm I'm not surprised at where we're sitting. But my question is, we've got the counties dealing with legislation that tells us to deal with these issues. And we have the legislators passing development standards that make that bridge become need to be bigger and bigger. And and when you just look at G F Cs and the energy codes, they eliminate a lot of affordable housing. I mean, it just so I I I know I'm it's I'm banging a empty drum, but it seems like we need to somehow look at how this is done.
That's a that's a good point, Pete. And our team is reflecting that concern in looking at the implementation side of this. You can you can have a zoning regulation that that allows for this or doesn't prohibit it. That's that's easy. Will the market respond to that? And what you're what you're pointing out is no, not in a true market rate version. However, we're also working with our our own county housing and and community services group and understanding that there may be a variety of players that come into the mix on this. It could be everything from land banking, land trusts, to not for profits like Catholic charities and others that would partner to make this happen if the development regs allowed it. So while your point is is spot on, we are aware of that and also looking at some of these other agencies. And I wouldn't say they're they're disrupting the market. But if if, for example, the county were to take a position that we will buy a piece of land and we will lease it to an organization that will build this housing, you've taken a big chunk of the finance off the table, and you've perhaps made that to be more affordable. Just not to say that the county would get into land buying business. But it's, you know, there's there's options for, you know, conservation districts and other things to to help write down the cost of providing this so that a builder could still make make a legitimate profit and investment to do it.
Like prevailing wage. I mean, if there's a dime of federal money or state money in a project, your labor cost just went up thirty percent. And and I mean, those are simple little solutions that would allow non-union contractors to build at a lower cost. But anyway, those are, I I think we need to keep banging on the legislature. These things are great that you're passing, but they got to be feasible.
And and absolutely true. You know, when when the legislature adopted these new rules and Commerce is implementing them, they are in effect acting a little bit like a state planning commission. They're 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 becoming more and more detailed in telling local communities what to do for planning. And historically, planning takes place at the most local level possible, which is, you know, historically your role. Once we see some of these hurdles or barriers to implementing these policies, we will be able to go back to our legislative team and say, here's your intent, here's how far we can get, but here are some other things that are going to prevent this from being the success that you anticipated two years ago. And yeah, if if they are able to step up and address those things, you know, this this will clearly be an iterative process.
Just to back up Pete, not going to like apartments or anything like that, but on the standard average house, it's fourteen to eighteen hundred square feet. These new energy codes are driving the cost of that particular house up about sixty five, seventy thousand dollars per one house. So backing it up with legislation, they're just dictating us on on blowing affordable housing out. So I don't know what it does to the big apartment complexes, but I know there's energy codes there too on how we're being dictated.
There have been some programs recently, one called C Pacer acronym, that provides for low income, low interest rate funding to existing building owners to retrofit for energy conversions and improvements. The county has implemented an ordinance to enact that. I don't think it's been very well used yet, but there there are some increasing tools to reflect some of what your concern is. But clearly, anytime anytime new codes are added to the code book, it adds cost.
So I think what we're talking about, or at least what the legislature is talking about, is they're trying to figure out some of the market failures that we are seeing that are visible. The housing that's needed is not being built that is affordable to people that are not in the upper echelons of wage earners. And so in order to provide that and have a well rounded, diversified community where people are have some opportunities, I I think that they've taken a first step, but you're absolutely right. I mean, the subsidies and other programs need to be there to help make that happen because the people that are building need to be able to make a living themselves. So eventually, I think what you're saying with the iterative process, we have to get there and marry those pieces. You know, make it, yes, we are going to do this. We are going to make that happen. And here's how we're going to help you. And Pete's right, every time you get a dollar of federal or state money, it adds. You get ten cents for it. So but it's not like the county has never been in the business of buying land. So that does happen, and and so does the city. So I think that that's the precedent is there, the creativity needs to be there, and the will to make it happen needs to be there.
Absolutely true. And it's, you said, the our role is to look at how to make that happen with our our legislative mandate in these allocations. But also, where does it make sense geographically to try to make this happen in a way that provides long term stability and not just a short term fix? Because the, you know, those of us that have increasingly white hair remember, you know, some of the housing challenges that happened in the late sixties, nineteen seventies, where, you know, these public housing projects were built with the best of intentions. But you ended up with, you know, the the Taylor Homes in Chicago and Prudigo in St. Louis and these places that became horrible places for people to live. So that kind of short term, let's build this and see what happens. You know, it didn't work then. There's no reason to think that that pattern can work again. So there's a there's a much more nuanced approach to making this happen. And that's part of what we're going to lead ourselves into here in a few minutes. But we wanted to give you kind of a preview of this very specific thing because it is one of the boxes we need to check for our G M A layers on our plan. And when we get through the Steering Committee next week and get their direction, the next time we see you, we will also have some updates on what these allocations look like by place. There's some draft work out there now, and that and you saw those two methods, the Hapt A and the Hapt B and the the Hapt A that's being revised. Those those do go into the detail of those populations being allocated per jurisdiction. And that's that's for the Steering Committee to chew on a little bit, and we'll bring that back to you later. Let's go on to the other one. We're going to go from the detail to a little bit bigger picture in. Thank you, Ella. The the comp plan as a whole, and this is where we've we have been spending a lot of our time on these individual G M A elements from housing to transportation, beginning the climate resilience side of it, rural and open space issues. So we've been focusing on getting our organization set for our requirements. And now we're we're broadening our team into the bigger question of what we call place making. And we've talked to you about some of this before with the idea that we don't want to, we don't want to do business the same way we've done it in the past. And having, you know, said that, here are the kind of basics for what the comprehensive plan does. You can see from the citations. And the the important part of where we're going, that's a little different from what the county and the cities did in the past, is we're reflecting that G M A considers the county as the regional government. County or all of the community, city and town comprehensive plans must be consistent and in conformance with the county's plan. Using the P TAC, we're we're sharing that information among ourselves as as professional planners to try to make sure that happens. But when it comes down to accountability and final decisions, it's going to go through you and your recommendations and the Steering Committee's recommendations to the County Board. The County Board is ultimately accountable for our urban growth areas. They're accountable for those housing allocations, the population allocations, and we are the ones that are held to account if they are insufficient. And so our challenge is making a collaborative consensus seeking effort with our colleagues, but recognizing that if we can't reach those agreements, the county will make those recommendations for them. And so we're we're being as clear as we can with everybody. It's like we we want to do this the right way. We want to be our planning partner, but it is our responsibility and our accountability at the end of the day. So we have to reach, we have to reach a decision. We can't study it forever. You've seen this before. This is this is this is the world of comprehensive planning in Washington State. You've got the various state laws that play a role in this, regional issues, our plan itself, and then, you know, the things that fall out of that from shoreline to zoning to capital facilities. The the change that Spokane County started in the recent past that you have been a part of is integrating capital facilities planning back into the comprehensive plan. You've you have been patient and deliberative on that capital facilities plan for two years to kind of fix the Band-Aids on on that. We're now back in making that work. But that's one of those issues that has not happened before, and it's it's a huge benchmark on how we do planning. Because what it means is you can't just simply add a piece of land and say, we're going to grow there unless you can demonstrate that there are concurrency issues with capital facilities that can in fact serve that property. So that's where it came from. This is interesting in that these are the single and multifamily permits that have been issued for that period of, you know, two thousand eight to twenty two through the central part of the county. And you can see the growth areas that we've probably all experienced, the Latour Corridor for the city, a little bit on the Maran Prairie, all of, you know, most of Liberty Lake building out in that period of time, the southeast part of the valley, up near the Five Mile Prairie and up pushing up past Mead into the north part of the area. So there has been quite a lot of of development in those key areas, in those urban areas, but you can also see a lot of permits in our rural area. So our plan as the county is to recognize, as we've said many times, the the single most important thing for this county is a healthy downtown Spokane. But we have to plan for and look at the quality of life of all of those disparate orange dots that are happening outside of urban growth areas. I I think when people see this, they really, I think it's a little bit shocking. They just don't anticipate that there's that much development happening in the rural areas. So here are the first cut of the population allocations. And there's a couple of key numbers. One is the red one on top. That's our projected population in twenty forty six. As a planner, I believe that is actually a very conservative number, but it's also a good number for planning purposes because it's generally agreed on, comes to us from the Office of Financial Management. And it suggests we're going to grow by a hundred thousand in that twenty year period. That's pretty modest growth, really. And when you look at things happening around our country, even today or this week in Spokane with triple digit temperatures, you know, Phoenix is not getting any cooler, Houston is not getting any cooler, Miami is not getting any cooler. Miami could be part, you know, three feet under seawater in in twenty years. I really believe the Pacific Northwest, the inland Northwest is going to be one of those areas that benefits from climate based migration. And if we are also wise in our economic development strategies, will be a good place for entrepreneurs, will be a good place to come build a business. Because more and more, those businesses can operate anywhere. You know, they don't have to be in downtown San Francisco to be part of that market. They could be here. And so I I think we have a chance in our comp plan to use And so I, I think we have a chance in our comp plan to use that as a, as a marketing document for growth. So all of that said, uh, these are the numbers we're looking at. And you can see in that second to the last column on the right, the uh, change in population for the various places. And notably, if you look at the unincorporated inside UGA line, uh, the fourth one down from the top, uh, there's an expected gain of about thirty-one thousand population. That is the single biggest geographic number up there. That's uh, more than the city at twenty-three thousand, more than the valley at twenty-one thousand. Uh, so, you know, we are, uh, we are not, because the custodians of nothing but ten acre lots. We are the custodians of the single biggest growth area of the next twenty years. Which is why our, our plan is, is taking these directions. This is how we look at the second part of the equation, which is now that we've got an allocation, uh, what do we have left to grow in, rather, in our existing urban growth areas? And remember, the urban growth area by statute is defined as everything where urban growth is allowed. It includes the areas inside of the municipalities as well as the unincorporated UGAs. Our concern is of course mostly the unincorporated UGAs. But this is the process that we have all agreed to through the steering committee. And uh, also it's a process that was uh, mostly memorialized in the twenty sixteen settlement agreement with Futurewise and the plaintiffs to guide how we would define uh, those urban growth areas. And so you can see some of it is, is actually very sort of obvious and reasonable. Uh, you know, what, what's vacant, what's underdeveloped? Uh, what do you have to take out, so to speak, because it's not necessarily buildable? And there's, there's, there's a lot of wiggle room in these things. Uh, if something, if a, if a site has a twenty percent slope on it, that's typically considered unbuildable and yet there's a lot of creative things you can do with a twenty percent slope. And so the, the, the trick is where do you, where do you have your biggest volume? And where do you have these little things that are kind of in the margin of error in terms of planning for growth? And then the uh, the agreement allows for what we call a market factor, which is at thirty percent. And that's a reflection, uh, it's a reflection of the unknown. You know, there could be a highly developable parcel that sits in the UGA with a property owner that is, is just not ready to develop. And we know that we anticipate it won't be ready to develop. They're, they're not interested in doing it for twenty years. And so we shouldn't calculate that as an area that we can grow into. So we take that thirty percent factor just off the top and leave it at that. And then that last step is, is where we start to marry these two together. Uh, looking at that available land and then those populations. And you know, what, do we have sufficient land in our urban growth area or not? So these are, are uh, a couple of those criteria uh, by which we look at, at those lands. And then here's kind of a, a quick bottom line. Uh, you can see our vacant and partially used lands. If we look at residential zoning density allowances, uh, that suggests that we've got rural for about fourteen thousand units, which could be about thirty thousand population. And that number thirty-seven-seven-two, that's the one that was on the allocation chart about three or four slides before. So uh, by this analysis, the UGA areas that are existing, if they're combined, may be able to handle what we expect to grow. Uh, now, you know, I, I said earlier, I think that's conservative. Uh, and so we're going to look at kind of a two-part strategy here. One is the GMA required criteria or UGA definition, which we're going to talk about as we move on, which, which suggests that we're fairly close already. And then we're going to have to look at, uh, I would call it what, what our predecessors called the urban reserve areas. Uh, to take a look at, at those in a different perspective and say, where are the areas that we should continue, should consider growing once we've filled up the next, the twenty-twenty-six UGA? And that may be a twenty forty-six or twenty fifty decision uh, that our successors can worry about. Uh, but we will take a look at that from a good planning perspective and start to lay the groundwork for this kind of two-part urban growth area. One is going to be the statutory and then one is the good planning version. Where, where do we grow after this? So here's the other challenge we have. Um, you can see we've got a little under seventeen hundred acres of land currently in a UGA boundary, but is still rural, uh, zoned for rural or for non-urban uses. These are leftover from the GMA creation in nineteen nineties. Uh, when, you know, again, our predecessors did their best guess to say, okay, we've got this dude beast called an urban growth area. We have to assign something to Cheney, to Airway Heights, to Medical Lake, to Deer Park, as well as the, the big core metro areas. Uh, what we've seen in that subsequent twenty, thirty years is most of those have not grown out much, if at all. So this acreage has to be reallocated before we can add new acreage to the urban growth areas we know it, notably the metro core. There's kind of a, a difference without a distinction in this. Because if we're looking at urban growth area in Medical Lake, for example, some of it is zoned industrial, uh, but some of it is zoned residential, but it's also under the JLU's contours for an air force base. So it's not going to develop. And yet Medical Lake wants to grow. We want to help them grow. It's suggesting that their urban growth area probably needs to be on their east side, connecting back to, you know, the, the transportation network and, and other things. And maybe even the southeast side, taking advantage of the lakes themselves. So in the, in one sense, what we're going to do is as these, as these places determine their growth and their needs, we're simply going to draw an entirely new UGA. What will come out of that is areas that will be primed for growth, but areas like that in Medical Lake that can't grow will be taken off the map. Um, similar to Cheney, Cheney has, you know, a hundred or so acres on their southeast side, a lot of which is covered in critical areas, a lot of it is, is really unbuildable land. Uh, that should have never been in the UGA. So that's going to be, those acres are, are going to not be used for development, so they will no longer be in the UGA. But Cheney also wants to grow, so they want to grow on their north side. So their, their expansion of their urban growth area is likely going to be repositioned to their north side to match their twenty-year growth horizon. And as we said before, this, this next phase of saying, well, here's the twenty-year horizon. Uh, you know, be ready to put in the infrastructure that you can go beyond on that when you're ready. So it, it's going to make for a, a, a very different map by the time we're done. These are those urban reserve areas, that, that lighter tan. And what you can see on the northern part of that is also uh, uh, well, what the legends, or what the statues call a lammard, uh, local area of more intense rural development. That's what we're sort of generally calling the North Mead area. You would know that as, uh, oh, thank you, this area right here. Uh, North Forty is up there. Uh, North Forty is building a new store up there. Uh, there's a Yolks Market in there. It's a remnant leftover from nineteen eighties zoning. But when GMA came in, it was, the comp plan called it a lammard, but it retained its contemporary zoning because that transferred over from pre-GMA days. We have to look at that as, as a legitimate growth area, even though it's not in the current urban growth area. Uh, and so you, you can see these, these were the areas that our predecessors anticipated growing into in this study. Uh, so they will be, you know, highly considered uh, for that. And we'll, you know, that'll be kind of the geographic analysis as we, as we move that forward. And here you can see kind of the UGAs themselves, uh, in a little bit easier fashion. And, you know, as, as we mentioned, for example, Medical Lake, right here. Uh, all of this is under those contours that prohibit more intense development to protect the mission of the air force base. They have a remnant of a UGA here that I, I'm assuming was anticipated to grow from the hospital or the medical campus at some point, but hasn't been used. They, they want to grow in this direction. So we want to help them reposition this so that they've got a place to grow directly. Airway Heights has a similar issue, highly constrained by noise contours and, and the JLU's. Uh, there's a hundred and eighty acres of this, it's almost three hundred acres in their UGA on their north side. Hundred and eighty or so is the county's uh, ORV park. It's not going to develop, shouldn't be in a UGA. Uh, you know, Airway Heights can develop somewhat between here and, and the city of Spokane. And their otherwise unrestricted growth area is to their northeast, which is also chelling. It's hard to see on this map, but there, but you, I'm sure you remember it. Across from the casino, for example, is, is extractions, mineral extractions, mining. And so that's, they, they can't grow that way, at least for the next fifty years. And then there's an expansion to the north of mineral extraction in this direction. So Airway Heights has a lot of restrictions that we're working with them to find creative ways for them to grow. Because if they're, yeah, any community needs to grow or they wither. And so we're trying to, you know, find, find that solution for those folks to move in that direction. So let's kind of think about now how we're going to move, how, how we're going to consider some of this uh, magic sauce, I guess. And what we, what we're talking about is, is taking all of these required elements and starting to say, how does, how do we make places out of this? And so we've got, you know, a few kind of basic ideas, at least to start with here. And the idea of, uh, you know, on the top is, is pretty simple, you know. Can we work on building neighborhoods instead of subdivisions? In the past, you've seen, you've seen across your desk, comp plan amendment after comp plan amendment that does nothing but take light industrial land and turn it into an eighty-unit subdivision. We've processed those because there's a housing crisis. We process those because we are legally obligated to do so and they meet the criteria. Uh, but the West Plains is a great example. We've got a lot of that happening out there. But there's no cohesion. There's no downtown West Plains. There's no central neighborhood to that. Uh, the county is making a big investment in creating a regional park on the south side of the West Plains. And so, you know, in joint work with our friends at the city, you know, we need to think about how we fill that in so that it becomes a, uh, a, a place where people can live, work, play, and not have to drive from Post Falls to go to work at the air force base. Uh, so these, these are kind of the, the starting points. And we're uh, very much looking for, you know, your input on, on these kind of basic principles as well. There will be a quiz at the end, just so you know. So what is placemaking? And we've, we've put up some resources from fairly well-established processes and organizations. Uh, and that partially is to, is to make sure that as we talk to our public and our investment and development community, uh, they know that we're uh, that we're not making stuff up, uh, that we're using principles that have been used in other places that have been both uh, profitable for investors as well as uh, environmentally and, and useful for the people who live there. And while that's a very, you know, busy graphic, it, it talks about, uh, you know, that kind of four basic things. Access, sociability, uses and, and comfort and image. All of which are, are almost design factors rather than true planning factors. But if you have no sense of design on what you want to see happening, it's hard to plan for it. It's hard to make development rules happen for that. And so here's, you know, kind of those topics of how you bring this multi-disciplinary approach to bear. Uh, it is, you know, engineering, it's architecture, it's urban design, uh, it's arts and culture. Uh, in the, when we're talking about placemaking, in a sense, we're not talking about changing per se residential development. We're talking about making sure residential development has places for those residents to enjoy. And that's, that's, you know, mixes of uses or that we'll come on to here in a second. But uh, there are a couple of, or at least I think three kind of very basic principles of this. Uh, and they, they may seem obvious and they may not. When we do a subdivision now, it is based on, uh, here's what the market is saying that people want to spend or can spend. Here's what we can afford to build at this price point. And this is, this is the size lot we need. This is the square footage we need. And, you know, at the end of the day, we can make ten or twenty thousand dollars on a, on a unit. This is saying we can do that, but what we're going to do is try to encourage those developers to either partner with others or think of adding in amenities at the same time that they're doing a basic subdivision. Now, this is not exactly going to be Spokane. That's the high line in New York. Uh, but a, you know, a, a huge urban redevelopment project. And the mixed-use part of this is, is critical. Uh, it's not something that we do now. I have had a couple of conversations with developers. Uh, and I have been really pleasantly surprised to hear that they are, uh, they're enth- they're, I won't say enthusiastic, maybe that's the wrong word. But they see the value in this and they're saying, yeah, we can do this. You know, it's like, well, no, what, what are you doing? You're putting it, you're putting another restriction on us. Uh, so we're, you know, we'll, we'll be continuing to have those conversations. But the, you know, the very early kind of due diligence is, is promising. And the mix of uses is, is as simple and old as, as medieval city building in the twelve hundreds. Uh, can you walk to work? Can you walk to a park? Can you walk to school? Can you go to a market? Can you do these things without having to drive from Four Lakes to Rosar's? Uh, if we can, if we can, and it's kind of the same argument of affordable housing. Does the market support all of this right now at a market rate? Probably not, because we don't, we don't do that here in Spokane County. However, can we uh, stimulate this through uh, tax increment financing, through other tools that give a little bit of, of ability to uh, have a project pencil out a little differently? And so it's, it's not something that we're saying to the development world, here's a new set of regulations you figured out. It's like, no, we're going to do this together and we will have skin in the game too. And then uh, this is leading into our responsibility for our new climate and resiliency element. And that is sustainability. Uh, again, in a way, back to that affordable housing argument. We want to build these communities that last for generations. Uh, that don't go through twenty years or thirty years and then get torn down and scraped in something else. So building these principles and these linkages, and you see, you know, Greenway system and other things that, that become the amenities, that become the spine, so to speak, of the projects is, uh, I think is going to be one of the important things we make. And this is, you know, just, just a quote talking about, you know, that, that mix of uses. And here's our example we were talking about before in that North Mead area. You know, the, the, the uh, big box is here. The new one will be down in this area. This is the Mead airstrip, if you're familiar with that. Uh, Yolks is right here. This is an industrial, uh, residential area, you know, all the way up to uh, Daymount Spokane Road. This is absolutely an urban area. It's a place. Doesn't have a name. It's not incorporated. It doesn't have a council or a mayor. Doesn't need one. But it, this is a great place to talk about, can that be, uh, can that fit into these new development rules so that as more development happens here, it infills parking lots or it infills other areas with amenities? And it, it doesn't happen now because all of the zoning that's there is exclusive. You keep things separate. You keep jobs separate from residences. You keep commercials separate from residences. If we can change that to allow that to build out in a way that creates a community, but also in a way that the market will dictate, uh, that will be a change in how we do business. So here's where uh, we're going. And you can see literally our bottom line. Uh, and you will be deeply involved in this from, you know, from every point forward. Uh, but we'll be, we'll be talking with the steering committee about this land capacity analysis that we previewed with you uh, next week. Uh, we will get moving them into this system. Over the rest of this year, we'll be having these visioning and scenario building sessions with the public, with stakeholders, with what we call the technical advisory committees that our team previewed with you at an earlier meeting. And then we anticipate in the fourth quarter having uh, a pretty good handle on what our urban growth area is going to look like, at least as a testing step, statement. Now, that'll certainly go into twenty twenty-five as we, as we add details and flesh out the skeleton. But the goal is to, uh, to complete that analysis, you know, in the next quarter and then be able to put it on a map uh, and have some discussions and agreements on that as we move into the fourth quarter. So with that, I am totally open to. So with that, I am totally open to questions and discussions and your thoughts and your wisdom. I recognize that was, that was quite a lot of new things to plop on your table, but we have to get started somewhere.
Scott, I'll, I'll start with one. I'm curious, you know, since it's been the news a lot, is the PFAS issue on the West Plains? And I'm just curious like how, and like a very specific issue like that. Is incorporated into the housing allocations, like. You know, if PFAS is such an issue and there's not clean water, how are we? How are we, you know, managing that? Are we decreasing their allocation or what is, what is the situation?
Thanks for starting with an easy question, Logan. Appreciate that.
I'm known for that, Scott. I'm known for.
We, we know the situation exists. Commissioner French and some of his colleagues have before, or put out at least one idea. Of using tax increment financing and other things to try to help mitigate that, that situation. But we don't have an answer yet. So. Does it affect the allocation? It might. It's, it's certainly a scientific, a quantitative. Piece of data that we have to take into account. If, if there, if there is insufficient, that's in a bigger issue aside from PFAS. The reason we're studying the coordinated water system plan is if we have resource shortages in places. Those areas will not be good candidates for growth. So that, that will absolutely factor into this. It's too early to tell how. And it's too early to tell whether that can be mitigated or whether that becomes a permanent solution.
Awesome. Thanks for that response. It seems like a really complicated thing to, to fit in, but it also feels like something that we kind of have to fit in. So. I appreciate that.
It does. And, and as we've learned, it's, it's, it's simply, it's a lot more complicated than just the firefighting chemicals that the Air Force and, or airport use. It's now more pervasive, pervasive than we anticipated. So it's. It's something that, that has to be factored in.
I had a conversation with my well driller last week. And. He was going to look further into it, but he shared with me that. You may have some concerns with ten acre parcels in the future. That if Department of Ecology sees a series of well applications from a. Same applicant. They're requiring a water license, a water permit, water right. Well. That's kind of scary because we, we have urban or rural ten acre parcels that. You saw all the red dots or orange dots you had up there.
Right.
But I mean, where does DOE fit into this? Cause they're.
Again, very good question of why we are so focused on updating our water plan as it exists. So we know. Who has resources, not just water rights, but who actually has wet water? And do they have the distribution system to turn that into taps? That will be a huge piece of data for the growth as we go forward. You know, what are called permit exempt wells that you, that come through ecology? They proliferate all through that rural area. We, we know that that's there. So what you're describing is, is an issue that, yeah, we, we also need to get a handle on. Particularly on those areas that are close enough to the urban core to be candidates for future urban growth. I, I don't know. Again, we don't know exactly what the answer is. We know they exist and we know we have to address them. Most of these areas are in a district. Served by a water purveyor, you know, Whitworth Water, Vera Water, Pasadena Park, Irrigation District Three. So there, there are these district boundaries that can be considered. And that's where this, the, the water study comes into play, but this, the study doesn't take into account the proliferation of independent wells that are out there. So it's a, it's a really. It's a good. It's a good topic. It's an unknown topic that we'll have to understand. And also what we, what we have. We believe from ecology is. Spokane County is kind of on the shortlist of their next round of water rights adjudication. And that will also be a scary thing because that will be a chance to legitimately look at everybody that has a water right and can that be. Well, adjudicated into. Into a legal document that lets it go in perpetuity.
Scott, I'm kind of concerned that. I mean, I understand the reasoning behind the. Changes or adaptations to the. Population allocation with the lower income, the zero to fifty percent AMI. But I am concerned. Especially if the, the planning horizon with STA doesn't get married up. Soon enough that we'll continue to have concentrations of poverty and. Wealthy enclaves and that. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to look very far to see where they are on either side of that equation. And that whole idea of, you know, being able to provide for the most vulnerable. As well as the middle income, which is continually under pressure and vanishing resources. And those that can afford to. Build out there where all those permits are going. So the idea of the lammers is really interesting and you, and as you say, there. Is a pretty healthy one already in existence and trying to figure out how do we. Plan for other lammers? And then provide for the diversity and inclusiveness of different housing types. Even though right now we're saying, well, that might be too far out. We don't have transit. The idea of people being able to move from. A very low income stage to progress through life stages and kind of make it. Is very American way. Or it used to be. So I'm just concerned that. When we do this, that we're going to keep promoting that type of vision.
We understand your concerns and share them. The idea of placemaking or mixed uses in building neighborhoods. Also has another version, just that we call a blended neighborhood. And that's a place that is. Planned in, you know, a square, a section of land or a quarter section of land. Whereas designed to have not, not only amenities, but have a range of housing stock and value from. Lower income affordability to upper income, you know, condo style development, for example. Those, those have been done. It's not a pipe dream kind of thing. But it's not a pattern of development that has been seen here in Spokane County. So part of our challenge is to discuss this, this kind of, can you make a blended neighborhood work economically and then be able to show. Builders that, okay, here it works in Arizona. It works in Colorado. It works in Utah. It doesn't mean it can't work here. And so it's, it's. It's convincing those that are investing, that are putting capital at risk. That what they're doing will give them a return on that capital and provide the benefits that we as planners and commissioners want to see in our community. It's, it's not an easy task when you're trying to change that paradigm. But we're confident that because it's been done successfully in other places. You know, we have a chance to at least have that argument. Like I said, with a, a small handful of conversations with existing developers. I was, I was really pleased to hear that they would consider that option and say, yeah, I think I could make that work. That I, I literally didn't anticipate that. So it's so early in the process.
We have an example on the west ridge of Five Mile. Which is the first one I've seen in fifty years here. There, there are builders up there that are, that have homes starting at three ninety-nine. There aren't many of them, but they have some. And the average home up there is eight hundred to nine hundred thousand. So we're starting to see, but getting. Builders to. Except that's a viable model is, it's just going to take more and more of it, but we're actually seeing that happen. In my lifetime, for the first time in the last year, you know.
And Pete, I'm glad to, glad you said that. This approach doesn't necessarily mean that a single builder is going to be comfortable with that entire economic spread. It might be that instead of a builder, especially what we call the retail builders, you know, Taylor Homes and other things. Instead of taking that quarter section of land. And saying, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this. It's like, well, let's find some partners. Let's, let's find, here's a group that can do this level of housing. This is what you're comfortable with. Here's a commercial group that'll partner with you to, to put some amenities in the middle of it. And you make a development master plan out of it instead of just saying, here's a plat, go, go forth and build houses. So it, it, it's, it's not easy, but it's possible. There's at least one hand up on the screen. And, and we're, you know, we're, obviously we're, we're open to, you know, public comments here. It's not a public hearing. There's no action in front of you, but we're. As part of our overall goal, we're, we're very much open to hearing from our audience. Mike?
Yeah. Hi, Mike Peterson with Spokane, Ponderosa. And I really appreciate this is brings up a lot of interesting topics. Even the PFAS is interesting, but. What I'm wondering is. I've had a, a woman just contact me just two days ago about. A small development in Ponderosa Hills and. There, it was a Ponderosa bike park, but it was on private land and there, the plan is there's a hearing going on there right now with Spokane Valley, and then we'll cut down all the Ponderosa pine trees. And then I've also been involved in the Thorpe Road property, which is owned by the DNR. And the plan there is to develop that. Now, the interesting thing, neither of those two are going to be low income housing at all. They'll be high income housing. And they will also remove virtually all of the Ponderosa pine trees. And so I was intrigued with the idea that you're doing this. Methodology overview to look at vacant and partially used lots because. I think there could be a criteria that would look at really vacant ones, ones that had been developed, buildings torn down or old closed down buildings like we see. Throughout Spokane, that those could be developed somehow instead of going into undeveloped. With tree stands like Ponderosa Pine, which are really important. I would mention Spokane, Ponderosa has planted about a hundred thousand trees in Spokane County over the past six or seven years. And yet it hurts to see them mature trees getting cut down. So. I just wondered if there's a way to prioritize really developed sites that don't have urban forest cover on them.
Great topic. And the quick answer is yes, not to get too far into the weeds or the trees as opposed to the forest. But, you know, urban forestry is, is a critical element for quality of life. We've seen that in, especially in affordable housing issues or traditionally lower income areas that have lost their urban tree canopies and, and therefore. Particularly this week are at more risk than they used to be. So we would, we would anticipate as development regs are restarted. Yes, that we will have, you know, forestry components to that. In, in bigger areas or faster growing areas, there's, there's a lot of tension between. Clearcutting, mass grading, scraping everything down so it's flat and then plating it and, and building houses. Respecting the land, building around the trees, building around the, the contours and things. It's more expensive to do the latter. Typically you, you're doing that for a higher income level than, than you can do for affordable housing. But it is possible to, to have that balance between respect for the landscape and creating development ready parcels. So. We will be looking at that. Some places it will work, some places it probably won't.
Thank you very much. And I'm willing to always help with those kind of hard looks at places. I know it's challenging.
Appreciate that. We'll put you on our list.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Olson with Village Cohousing Works. Hi. Yeah, I would like to, first of all, just to thank Mike for his comments. He echoes a lot of the priorities that our working group has. Uncovered from our constituents, like our stakeholders in terms of keeping a sense of place. Really, we see the planning department's responsibility and the commissioner's responsibility to. Only okay projects that really fit the needs of the community. And. If, if we, like the only reason that, you know, it's not affordable for an affordable housing project to. Keep any of its trees on its, on the property is just because the developer wants to make a certain bottom line. They want to make a certain profit margin. So if essentially we as a community say, no, we need to keep tree cover because it's important for our community, then. The planning department has a requirement, has ought to. Only approve those projects that really are serving the long-term needs of the community. I mean, you were saying that that is a priority to build these long-term, you know, twenty. You know, multi-decade projects that we're going to still want to be using twenty years from now. And if that's the case, tree cover is really important for them. The second thing I'd like to comment on is. Earlier in your presentation, you talked about how we should have, how there's been some pushback against. Requirements such as the, the shall wording versus the should wording. Well. From our perspective out here in the North County. It's essential for new projects within the urban growth area to have a component to, all of them should have a component of housing. In, in LA and in other communities, they've, they've put in a requirement where, you know, they can greenlight projects that have two thirds housing. Included. So like two thirds of the project is housing. It gets greenladed within, you know, within a certain area. Well. Why don't we have requirements that new projects within the urban growth area have to have housing?
Thank you.
If I could. That same project or projects on the west rim of Five Mile. Part of the development up there is in the city limits. And part of the development is in the county. And to the point of these people that just spoke. There's apparently no street, a tree requirement for plats in the county. When you drive up there, you see beautiful trees being replaced in the city lots and it's a death scape. In front of the houses in the county lots and, and I, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's part of. Comp plan stuff, but. If you don't, if you tear down trees and you don't replace them.
Yes. So. It, it, it is part of our. Responsibility as planners to make those recommendations to you and, and to get those comments from you representing the public. There's a couple of things. When we talked about urban forestry. Yes, the city does have an urban forestry program. They have a street tree requirement for almost every kind of development. It is, it is not unusual. It's very typical of, of urban development. Less so in counties. And what we're adapting to is the fact that. Spokane County is likely going to have to administer these urbanized urban growth areas in perpetuity. Because the, the annexation strategies really don't work for cities right now in, in Eastern Washington. And so rather than developing them with the anticipation that they'll be annexed in five years. We, we're going to have to maintain them for the, for a lifespan. And so, yes, having now more. I hate to, hate to put simply as a requirement, but having the amenity value of an urban forestry. Component to a subdivision or to plats is something that's very important to us. And another point that, that was made, you know, why can't we get. More growth in areas that are already have it instead of in new areas? Our colleagues at the city have taken a big step in that direction as they've increased their density standards and changed their zoning to, to. Really encourage infill development. Some of you have been on those planning commissions in the past. When the Centers and Corridors was created as part of the GMA, it was a great idea. The city's development regs didn't follow. You, you didn't have the development regs to achieve the plan goals. Well, they're now taking a, a look at that and, and changing their regs to try to better achieve that sort of urban infill growth. That's, it's, it's very wise. We're, we're very supportive of that. We will help them in any way we can. And we'll try to establish that same parameter as we build these neighborhoods as opposed to subdivision, you know, in these urban growth areas. So. The tide is turning a little bit away from, you know, scrape it and build into building more quality and building with a long. into building more quality and building with a longer term horizon. And then finally, my last point on that, because we have this new planning element on climate and resiliency, the idea of a tree canopy, being able to heap, uh, help keep things shaded, help involve transpiration, help keep things cool. Is something that has real value as opposed to just a cost to add a three inch caliper tree every 50 feet on the street. And so there's going to be a better economic argument for doing it rather than not doing it. And of course, as as the, uh, first gentleman, uh, Mike Peterson mentioned, what better way to keep the trees rather than than have to replace them? You know, if you can work around them so much, the better.
Hi, I guess I'm up next. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. My name is Dave Schab. I'm the Executive Director of the Inland Northwest Land Conservancy. And by way of introducing myself, I just want to start off by uh, describing why I love living in in Spokane County. I think like most of us here, I I live here. I've grown up here and I love living adjacent to, um, natural lands, open viewscapes, uh, thriving ecology, clean water, clean air, et cetera, with easy and and uncrowded access to those lands. I think these natural lands benefit us for a whole lot of reasons. Obviously, they benefit us um, through economic, uh, opportunity. The people clearly want to live here because of access to these lands. Uh, they provide clean air, water and food and, uh, and community health benefits, especially during these hot days. Um, just last night, my family and I went for an evening swim on the Spokane River and we were surrounded by people, uh, seeking solace from the heat in the cool waters of the Spokane River. Again, this morning I was out for my morning bike ride in the Dishman Hills and the parking lot in the Glen Rose neighborhood was half full at 6:00 AM this morning, people getting out early to enjoy the trails around us. Um, so I'm not an expert in affordable housing or the creation of market incentives to promote it, but our organization is experienced in identifying and protecting essential conservation lands across our lurk, our rural landscape. Um, to do this, we use an objective, science-driven analytical GIS tool that we have developed to identify the lands and waters in our region that provide essential habitat, ecological function and community benefit. We've demonstrated this tool to Director Chesney and we are ready to share it with you all to assist in your very complicated planning process. Using this tool, we work with private landowners to help permanently protect the lands and waters that matter most to all of us here in the inland Northwest. And we do so in collaboration with a lot of other organizations. Uh, we work with the Inland Northwest Trails Coalition, the Dishman Hills Conservancy, the Lands Council and many other nonprofit and community organizations throughout the county. We also do a lot of work and projects with Spokane County Parks using Conservation Futures Program. I wanted to share something that many of the folks that I talk with find alarming, and that is that in most counties of Western states, the average amount of land protected for public benefit is about 30% of the landmass in counties. However, in Spokane County, that amount of land is hovers just around or below 10%. So I'd invite you to imagine that 90% of the forested hills, natural lands, farms, lakes and streams in our county are potentially at rest at risk, uh, of permanent conservation of, excuse me, permanent conversion due to land development. We experience a lot of urgency every day from Spokane County residents calling us to ask us to help protect the lands that matter most to them, but our private land protection alone can't solve this challenge and our response must include robust land use planning. And I'm so grateful to you all for rolling up your sleeves and and participating in that process. Um, so in conclusion, I guess I'd I'd just like to urge, and I'm really encouraged by what I'm hearing from Director Chesney about keeping the growth uh, urban growth area boundary constrained. But as you consider moving the boundary or growing the boundary, I would urge you um, to keep it as constrained as possible, to increase density and provide affordable housing close to urban infrastructure and services. To continue fostering collaborative partnerships between municipalities, nonprofit organizations, businesses and landowners. And work with organizations like ours to identify and protect the lands and waters that matter. Building, uh, and expanding trail networks to connect people to natural lands and live into our shared values of loving the natural spaces that surround us here in Spokane County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Anyone else? Other hand? Yep. Anybody in the audience? No? Scott, any further comments?
Uh, no, I I think we're.
Commissioners?
Oh.
Oh. Would you please come forward for the record?
Yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Name and address and all the, you know, the.
Suzanne's Fall, uh, 6412 North Jensen Road. So my question is, um, you know, I'm interested in hoping to have my area, um, rezoned. And and I've been here a couple of meetings and I'm just curious if that's going to be, um, told today where those areas of urban growth are. I know, I appreciate all the work that everybody's doing and I know it's very complicated. I'm just wondering if that's going to be shared with us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Uh, thank you. The the, uh, urban growth areas and the boundaries adjustments, uh, that are anticipated will be back before you probably in late fall. Uh, they will have to go through the PTAC Committee, which is working on them now. Then through the Steering Committee, uh, to, um, identify, we mean, representing all of the municipalities, uh, that there's some consensus on, yes, this is where where our growth areas need to be. So that map will not be available, yeah, in the short term. But we'll, we're hoping kind of in the October, you know, fourth quarter of the year timeframe to to have that study map available. I would anticipate that there will be, uh, you know, both that initial study and then some, you know, quantitative analysis done. And chances then would be that the Steering Committee would make a firm recommendation at their first or second meeting in 2025, uh, that would then be incorporated into the 2026 plan. So it'll be toward the end of the year before we see what that actually looks like.
Thank you. Uh, more comments from the commission? Have we reached the end of our exhausted, the end of our commentary?
We we have for today. Uh, this is the, you know, the first of many discussions.
Appreciate it.
So we wanted to give you a preview of the of the more detailed housing discussion that's going on now, but also start talking about the essentially kind of the planning umbrella that we want to use to look at, uh, you know, building quality places, building places that have a good quality of life for growth as we go forward. And we will continue the discussion.
Uh, there was no line item here under staff report. I don't know if that was intentional or is this open ended or how, do you have anything?
Only one item. Uh, we are going to, uh, cancel the second meeting in July. Uh, we have no pending
Okay.
items. And there's this work that you've heard some about today is going to uh, go through the Steering Committee in July and then we'll need some staff time to work on that. So uh, we'll have a little bit of a summer vacation and then we will be back in August.
Very well. Next order of business is approval of amendments of June 27, 2024. Those are in your packets. Are there any additions, emissions, errors, adjustments that need to be made? If not, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt those amendments of June 27. So moved by Pete Rainer.
Second.
Was that Logan?
Yeah. It was.
Thank you, Logan. Thanks for being here. Okay, no comments on this. All those in favor of adopting those minutes of June 27, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Those minutes are hereby adopted. Next meeting is October the 15th and October, excuse me, August the 15th and August, uh, the 29th, 2024. Uh, with that, if there's no other comments, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Logan. Second?
Second.
Second by Melissa Whitshack. Uh, priority motion, um, all those in favor adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. We're hereby adjourned. It is 1016. Thank you.
Thanks y'all. Have a good one.